We have just concluded our questioning of the moderator candidate and we are back with our school committee candidates. And they have selected the order in which they will sit and receive questions and I will be going back and forth between the two of them. Our candidates are Dr. Erdem Yuro and attorney Molly Cochran. And I want to say good evening to you both.
Good evening.
I'll begin the questioning by having you, and it begins with you, Mr. Yuro. You was picked number one. And I wanted to ask you, why are you running for reelection to the school committee?
Excellent question, Mr. Feaster. Good evening, Ms. Cochran. Good evening. Thank you to Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters, and Mr. Feaster for making this night possible. It's a great opportunity to speak to you. I am running because I have two children in Stoughton Schools. One is in third grade, the other one is in seventh grade. We are, I have been living here for 30 years, so we are not going anywhere. I have been serving for six years and I have made an impact, in my opinion, and I would like to continue improving the Stoughton Schools. We all want to improve our town's economy. We would like companies with high-paying jobs and new families move to our town. Having great school is a must towards achieving that goal. We made great strides over the last six years I have been serving on the school committee. We improved the level rating of our schools. Planning of our new high school project is well underway. This year, while I was serving as the committee chair, we introduced unprecedented initiatives to improve the school department's transparency, accountability, and communications. For example, the school committee now publishes the member packets on the internet before the meetings. School committee now holds office hours for parents, employees, and residents. Affirmative school committee vote or the chairman's signature for approval is no longer a rubber stamp. And school committees started a meaningful dialogue with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yuro.
Thank you.
Dr. Yuro, attorney Cochran.
Thank you very much. I'm running for Stoughton School Committee because I do care deeply about public education and about the state of Stoughton Schools. I have two children at the high school. They've been in the Stoughton public education system since kindergarten. They've had the benefit of a very good education and the experience of a lot of really outstanding teachers. My theme in this campaign is for us all to remember that when it comes to the school committee and the operation of the schools in this election, that it's all about the kids. I am a civil litigation attorney in private practice, but I've always been very drawn to and concerned with public policy and public interest issues. I want to protect and support the schools in Stoughton, and protect and support what's working so far, but of course to keep striving for improvement to make sure that the schools meet the needs of all of our families and all of our children. Everyone knows that the schools are the lifeblood of the town, and if they're sinking, then the whole town is going to sink. I'm running because I believe at this time that I could make a positive contribution to the school committee, not because I have all the answers to all the questions, but I can have a more positive dialogue. I believe that only by working together can the school system be something that we can all be proud of, that achieves at the highest levels. Unfortunately, now we have a lot of divisiveness. I think it's important to build collaborative relationships among school committee members, between the school committee and the administration, town officials, state officials, including the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's very important to gain their trust and respect. I believe in high standards and rigorous preparation for college and the workplace. And I want the more affluent families in this town to feel confident about sending their kids to the public schools, because it's concerning to me that they're sending their kids sometimes to private schools, and that's not necessarily healthy for our community and for our school system. So in summary, it's all about the kids. It's about providing them with the best possible education opportunities, but it's also about the welfare of the time, of the town overall, and every citizen has an interest in this election.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cochran. I think I'm just going to pause for a moment because some of our viewing audience may have just tuned in and they aren't familiar with what the format is, so let me just restate it at this particular point in time. I will ask questions of the candidates. They will have two minutes to respond. There will also be questions that will be taken from the audience, if time permits, to the school committee candidates. And then each of them will have two minutes closing statements. So that's the format that we have this evening, and I will proceed to the next question. And that's for you, Attorney Cochran. Given the high cost of either renovating or rebuilding the high school, are you in favor of partnership with businesses which might create advertising on fields, you know, advertising on buses or other matters? Would you be in support of that?
Can I just say, that's an excellent question, and that's a question that I've had some thoughts about. I've read about that happening in other towns and other communities, and I would definitely say my initial reaction is that that is to be avoided. I did hear at one point in time there was some discussion about IKEA perhaps helping with the athletic fields and having them named after IKEA and donating a million dollars to the town. You know, at that point, it makes, you know, it makes there are compelling reasons on either side of that. I don't like our public education system to be corporatized, to be privatized in any way, sense, or form. However, could there be some compromise and some minimal amount with respect to, you know, some needed funding if otherwise we can't accomplish what we need to accomplish as far as the school facilities? Because I do think we are in dire need of improving the high school, of building a new high school, and if we have to at least consider some type of partnership, I would not rule it completely out.
Thank you, Attorney Cochran. Dr. Yuro?
I'm going to apologize, I couldn't hear the question.
The question was, given the high cost of either renovating or rebuilding a high school, are you in favor of partnerships with businesses which might include advertising on fields, athletic fields, advertising on school buses? Would you be in favor of that?
Okay. The, I mean, money is money, so we could be looking at various options for raising revenue by maybe naming a certain part of the high school after a business or some kind of person or trust. But that should be on a case-by-case basis, you know, just advertising on the school buses or advertising at the games. I don't think that's going to provide substantial amount of income to be able to make a difference for the, you know, funding a new high school building.
Okay. This question is to you, Dr. Yuro. What should the relationship be among the school committee members, the administration, and legal counsel?
The relationship between the school committee members, administration, and the legal counsel. The school committee members are individually elected to do a job, and the school committee members on themselves, they don't have any authority. They have a, as a group, or at least as a majority, they have the authority to supervise the superintendent, to hire or fire the superintendent, to the, come up with policies for the district, and come up, approve the budget. The school, I understand my opponent would like to have more harmonious relationship between the school committee members. Nevertheless, I believe in people advocating their opinions, and everybody airs their opinions, and at the end, a vote is taken and then there is action done. The administration, the school committee, is only responsible for the actions or the hiring and firing and the evaluation of the superintendent, not the rest of the administration. So when you talk about administration, you could be talking about principals or assistant principals, or school committee has no authority over those. And the legal counsel is the person who gives advice to the school committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yuro. Attorney Cochran, same question.
Yes, I would like to address the relationship among the school committee members and the administration. I think that Dr. Yuro correctly stated what the statute provides and the legal foundations for what that relationship should be. I'm not sure in reality that's how that relationship is playing out. There is supposed to be, the schools are fundamentally to be run by the superintendent and by the administration. The day-to-day operations is not really the function of the school committee. I do think there has been a tendency by Dr. Yuro to micromanage on all sorts of levels, including to actually request that the business manager who reports to the superintendent should actually report to the school committee, i.e. to him directly. And I think that that goes beyond what the proper rule of the school committee is and creeps into micromanaging and actually, quite frankly, interfering and being disruptive and overstepping the proper bounds. As for how the, by hoping for a more harmonious relationship as those school committee meetings play out on television and they're very public, I do think there needs to be more decorum, more diplomacy, and quite frankly, there needs to be rebuilding of trust and respect among the school committee members and trust and respect given to the administration, to the superintendent, and to the deputy superintendent, which is sadly lacking as displayed unfortunately by Dr. Yuro during those meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Cochran. The next question comes to you, and you must have anticipated what it might be because it's, the question is, do you find the proceedings of the school committee to be respectful? And do you feel the demeanor has any impact on the committee's ability to work effectively?
I think that's an excellent question, and part of my campaign is the desire to see us have more effective leadership. I think there's actually a complete breakdown between a positive working relationship between the chairman of the school committee, Dr. Yuro, and Dr. Rizzi, and the deputy superintendent, Mr. Ford. And I think that was even revealed by Dr. Yuro himself in the community forum debate that you moderated, in which you stated that he did not vote for the 2015-2016 budget because he did not have confidence in or he did not have enough information from the superintendent about the numbers. So there is a breakdown in that relationship, and it is very unfortunate. I think it not only interferes with this administration's ability to carry out its duties and to work productively, I think it also will make it very difficult should this town have to hire a new superintendent in the coming years, because if one are to watch the school committee meetings and see the way that the superintendent and the deputy superintendent are cross-examined, as if Dr. Yuro is a prosecuting attorney, and the way that he speaks to them, I think it's very off-putting, it's very off-putting, it's very uncomfortable to watch in fact, and it's a very unprofessional.
Thank you, Attorney Cochran. The same question to you, Dr. Yuro.
Ms. Cochran is making statements of facts which, some of which she doesn't know, she is representing her opinions as facts. I find that to be unprofessional for an attorney, but we'll deal with that some other time. The issue is, the school committee is responsible for the hiring and the firing and the evaluation of the superintendent. I'm sorry, Mr. Feaster.
Yes.
What was the question again?
The question was, do you feel the proceedings of the school committee to be respectful? And do you feel the demeanor has any impact on the committee's ability to work effectively?
I always act, if you watch the school committee meetings, I always act in a professional manner with respect, and I treat everybody with dignity. Some members may not be doing so, and I can't be responsible, but as the chair, I do allow everybody to speak their piece, and everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Yuro. The next question is to you. Should the school committee implement all policies and hiring decisions passed by town meeting? If not, why?
Well, the school committee, town meeting approves the bottom line of the school budget. School, town meeting doesn't approve specific positions. So the school committee has the authority to come up with the budget and to spend it as it sees fit. So we also have a policy, I should have brought it, but at the next debate I will bring it, school committee has the ultimate authority to spend the school budget. So there is a school committee policy to that effect, and that's also the Massachusetts law.
Thank you, Dr. Yuro. Attorney Cochran?
Do you mind repeating?
Question is, should the school committee implement all policies and hiring decisions passed by town meeting? If not, why?
I would presume that the reason that the town meeting has passed, approved the hiring decisions is because that went through the process of going through the school committee and through the superintendent, and once those positions have been funded, I would think that it makes sense for the administration and for the school committee to follow through and hire and fill those positions. If you're specifically talking about the Unit B positions, which have been the subject of a number of school committee votes and contention and divisiveness, I do feel that those positions should be filled. I think that they have been requested by the administration for a number of years. The administration felt that it had the budget to fill those positions, that those would help move from the, and adopt the common core standards that we are adopting, and that would be helpful to continue our schools on the path to success that they have demonstrated and been on for the past few years. So I do think that once those positions were approved and the funding is there, that they should move forward with that and have those positions filled.
Thank you, Attorney Cochran. I'm going to remind the audience once again that we are taking audience questions. I would ask for Molly, or if, excuse me, Mary Lou, if she's not there, then Terry would gather those questions and begin to present them to me, because I'm coming to the end of my questions here, to the school committee candidates. The next question is to you, Attorney Cochran. It is, given that the Chamber of Commerce budgets for school projects, what are some of the ways that the schools could partner with the Chamber?
I certainly think that's an excellent idea, to partner with the Chamber of Commerce with respect to any kind of school programs that they could help with or help fund or help give some, you know, help with creative projects involving the school. I know that the schools, and in particular the high school, have a number of enrichment programs and after-school clubs, including DECA, which involves business enterprise and things of that nature. So I think that the schools should take advantage of every resource in town, and that certainly would include the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cochran. Dr. Yuro?
I must admit that I am a proud member of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce, and our meetings are always very informative and very entertaining, so I invite everybody, including Attorney Cochran, to join us. The business is an important part of the education. So the Chamber members has, are a great resource, so they could be used to participate in the, like, high school science projects or high school other kinds of projects. Chamber is also an important source for getting the internships. So we could be working together to improve the internship opportunities for our high school students. My son just got elected to the National Junior Honor Society, so he has some duties to do a community service. And Chamber, we can line up the Chamber to come up with some, you know, service opportunities that would be beneficial to both the students and the children. And finally, the Chamber can be a great resource for raising funds, because we are relying on parents to pay athletic fees or the music fees or the other club fees. Chamber could be raising some money so that we could remove some of those burden from the parents, because they are already paying very high taxes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yuro. And the next question comes to you. Stoughton's ethnic population is widely diverse. To a large degree, the Stoughton school staff and administrators do not reflect the diversity. As a school committee member, what would you do or will you do to ensure a change in the ethnic makeup of the staff and administrators within the schools?
That's a very good question. In fact, back in 2013, Department of Education came to Stoughton Public Schools and did a study and issued a district review report. That report is available on the website and the school, as well as the Department of Education. One of the areas that they have identified is that the employees in Stoughton Public Schools do not represent the makeup of the town. So that's also important to me, because I'm also an ethnic minority. So how do we do that? It's actually, Stoughton's school committee does not hire any of the employees. It is the superintendent and the principals that hire the employees. So they are under the mandate of the, recommendation of the Department of Education to do that. And you were kind enough to come and illuminate the school committee on this topic. It is a very important topic. I, and I think you will come back to the school committee again, and, you know, we'll have another discussion and maybe vote on the model policy you brought to the school committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yuro. Attorney Cochran, same question. Stoughton's ethnic population is widely diverse. To a large degree, the Stoughton school staff and administrators do not reflect that diversity. As a school committee member, what would you do to ensure a change in the ethnic makeup of the staff and administrators within the schools?
Thank you. I think that's an important question, and I think that short of addressing that issue and perhaps solving that problem is going to be a key to the future of Stoughton's success, of Stoughton School's success. To begin with, I do recall that you brought before the school committee, perhaps back in November, some months ago, a proposed diversity policy whereby the school committee would adopt, as an objective and a goal of the school committee, to have a more diverse population of teachers and administrators. Unfortunately, that policy has not been advanced. It has somehow dropped off the agenda that is set by my opponent, Dr. Yuro. So I do think that needs to be taken very, very seriously. I think it's important to prioritize, of course, recruiting from colleges which might have more minority students or students of different, differing ethnic backgrounds. I think as Dr. Rizzi said, if you recruit from Bridgewater State College, you tend to get young, white, female prospective teachers. And so I do think it's important to reach out to different colleges, to different, to different sources of new teachers and administrators. I do think that Stoughton, with its population, its diverse population and the town that is, could actually be a very inviting place for a teacher from a minority background to want to make their career. So I do hope we can make serious gains in that. And I think along those lines, and I think it's been suggested that one of the things to do to make those gains is to make sure that the starting salaries for teachers who are right out of college are comparable, are comparable with the surrounding towns and with actually the towns that do tend to hire, or the cities actually that hire more minority teachers. So again, so that we can compete, that we can be a presence in places that have more minority students graduating who are going to become teachers, and that we can be a presence, that, and we can be seriously considered, because I do think it's going to make a great, a great difference in the long run.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cochran. I just want to tell the candidates, I have one more question for you, and then you have an opportunity to do your two-minute closing statement. This question goes to you, Attorney Cochran. How might the results of this election affect Stoughton's ability to get state funding for the new high school?
I think that's really a very critical issue for the town at this point. One of the reasons that I think I am running for school committee is because I have been concerned about the state of the high school and about the fact that it seems really quite overdue that we have a new high school. It's very disconcerting to go to the other high schools when I travel to see my children's games and other activities, and to see that they are years and years ahead of us. They've got their new high school built, and we have deteriorating facilities, and the state is on, I believe, on, you know, warning status, I'm sorry, that the high school is on warning status because of that, that serious concern about that. I do think that it's very important to have a high-functioning school committee that not only town officials, but state officials, and in particular, the Massachusetts School Building Authority can have trust and confidence in. That the state agency can choose among many towns who really need and want the funding to build new school facilities. They can choose who they trust and who will, quite frankly, handle the money responsibly. And I'm concerned that where there's a breakdown in the relationship between the chairman of the school committee and the superintendent, as to the extent that he can't even vote for the annual budget, that this is such a dysfunctional relationship and such a serious problem with the divisiveness between the school committee and among the school committee members, and between the school committee and the superintendent, that this is going to be one that, quite frankly, the state's just going to take a pass on Stoughton. And that's going to be a very, have very serious consequences for the future of the students. It really sends a very poor message to the students that we have the high school that we have today, and it could really be a great turnaround for this town if we have a new high school built. So I think it's very important that we have a good school committee that can be trusted and relied upon.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cochran. Dr. Yuro?
Thank you. Mrs., I'm disappointed that Mrs. Cochran is resorting to scare tactics and double talk, because she's complaining that we are, she's blaming everything on the school committee chair. I'm running as a school committee member, not as a school committee chair, so she's confused about that. She complains about negativity, but all her complaint has been about being negative, about, you know, attacking me. She mentioned that a school committee person voting against the budget, that's healthy, Ms. Cochran, you're just confused about the democracy. There are five members in the board. I voted against it because one of the reasons was superintendent and her contract had a two-and-a-half percent increase guaranteed to her, and she was asking for four-and-a-half percent. And I said, wait a minute, we haven't even done your evaluation. How could you be asking four-and-a-half percent? So that's, and I asked for information that wasn't provided to me. That's all in the school committee meeting videos that you can watch. She's misrepresenting it. And the fact is, if I was the government agency trying to spend money on a school, I would look for an honest school committee, honest government organization that will look at the things, that will ensure transparency, that wouldn't hesitate to debate the issues, debate the facts, than just sweeping everything under the rug and then lollipops and sunshine, let's get along together. That is wrong.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yuro. And we're now at the point where you can give your two-minute closing. Attorney Cochran, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to point out that Dr. Yuro has changed his reason for voting against the budget, and I would ask the audience to look at the Jeff Pickett candidate profile that was taken earlier in March, it's on TV, where a different reason was given, and I quoted the reason that was given in his televised profile. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and you, Mr. Feaster, for giving us the opportunity to speak to the public. This is a very important election, not only because of the new high school process that is underway, but also because whether it's in the near future or sometime within the next couple of years, the school committee may be picking a new superintendent, which is a critical mission of the school committee. And I honestly say, who would want to apply for the job, given the current level of the school committee and how it's functioning? We need a welcoming school committee that works in partnership with the superintendent, with respect for the superintendent. My campaign is about effective leadership. That means carrying out your duties with respect for others and cultivating good relationships across the board, including with teachers, administrators, town officials, et cetera. I don't think that the school committee members can accomplish anything by being condescending and disrespectful or just by being oppositional. It's a delicate balance, perhaps, between advocating for the interests of families and overseeing the administration, and overreaching, perhaps, and overstepping those boundaries. But I believe that I can achieve that balance and that I could be an asset to the school committee and not a hindrance to the educational committee and not a hindrance to the educational message, mission. And what I bring to the table is the ability to work collaboratively with others and build consensus. I did that when I was on the Town Manager Search Committee, and two of my fellow committee members, who are also themselves former school committee members, have endorsed my candidacy. I have the ability to analyze complex issues, to see the issues from all sides. I have the ability to bring the parties together and resolve disputes, and contrary to popular belief, most civil litigation cases are settled, and I often settle my cases through mediation. So now is not the time for continued divisiveness and dysfunction.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cochran.
Thank you very much.
I need to stop you there. Dr. Uro, your two minutes.
Again, thank you very much for making this night possible. As you have seen, my opponent is talking with double talk and trying to confuse you. Don't be fooled. The school, our school system, we are doing well, but we can and we must do much better. Did you know the Department of Education ranked our high school at the bottom 45 percentile of all public high schools in Massachusetts in 2014? We must, we can and we must do better. SAT scores. Did you know our average SAT score is 976 out of 1,600? This is significantly below the state average. We want our kids to get good GPAs, get good education, and to be able, if they want to go to a college, we want them to go to a good school. If you look at the subgroups, distribution of people, for African-Americans or special education kids, they are much below the average of 976. With a 976, this is the average student SAT score. With that, it's even hard to get to our UMass Amherst. We owe it to our children to give them the best education to help build their futures. Please vote for me, because I am an experienced school committee member with a proven track record for over six years. Please vote for me, because I am committed to improving the quality of education in Stoughton schools rather than preserving the status quo. Please vote for me, because I will continue to demand transparency and continue to hold the administration accountable, because that is the role of the school committee, not to get along with each other.
Thank you very much, Dr. Uro. Attorney Cochran, audience, please join me in thanking our school committee candidates. We wish them well.